Commissioners, everybody ready? All right, it is now seven o'clock. It's going to be called to order the City of Lake Elmo Planning Commission meeting for Monday, March 11th, 2024. First item, thank you, is to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Second item is to approve this evening's agenda, which includes approval of previous minutes. We have two public hearings, no new or unfinished business, and a couple of communication updates. Do we get a motion for agenda approval?
Motion to approve the agenda from...
Second.
2/26.
A motion by Commissioner Ray Camp, seconded by Commissioner Reese, to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Third item is to approve the minutes from our previous meeting of February 26, 2024. Any edits, clarifications, alterations, comments? Hearing none, will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes from 2/26, 24.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Ray Camp, seconded by Commissioner Jeffrey, to approve the minutes from February 26, 2024. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. And we're moving on to item four for this evening. We have two public hearings. The first will be the 10-997 32nd Street, Variance and Lot Division. We'll hear from city staff before the applicant, and then a public hearing after that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant for tonight's application is David Schmeckel and Sarah Johnson. The property is located at 10997 32nd Street, which is located on the north shore of Lake Elmo Lake. The property is currently zoned rural single-family with a shoreline overlay and guided in the city's comp plan as rural single-family sewered. To provide a little bit of history on this request, the property was originally platted as Lot 9 and Lot 10 of Lake Elmo Park, and the lots were consolidated by prior owners. The request before you tonight is to divide the property back to separate lots for ownership purposes. The property currently has two houses on it, both serviced by separate utilities, and variances are required for the lot dimension and setback deviations. So then, this application is a bundle of six variance requests. The first two are for lot width, so Lot 9 and Lot 10 need a deviation from the city's shoreline lot width requirements. Code requires 75 feet. The Lot 9 would be just over 60 feet wide, and Lot 10 would be just under 60 feet wide. The second bundle is for lot area. Shoreland sewer lots are required to be 20,000 square feet. Lot 9 is proposed a little over 17,000 square feet, and Lot 10 would be just under 17,000 square feet. And then Lot 9 would need two deviations for structure setbacks for both the primary and accessory building. City code requires a 10-foot setback. The primary structure is setback 5.5 feet, and the accessory structure would be setback 3.1 feet. And then I have the proposal before you of the division. The areas in hatch marks would be decks, and then the solid black would be structures. As you are aware, variances must meet four criteria before they are reviewed for approval. The first of those is practical difficulties. The applicant has proven that strict enforcement of the code would cause practical difficulties. The applicants are proposing to split the property and maintain the single-family dwelling unit on each lot. The property already has separate utility stubs and access points. Dividing the lot would make the property consistent with how it was originally platted as Lot 9 and Lot 10 of Lake Elmo Park and clarify ownership. The second criteria is unique circumstances. The applicant has established that the plight of the landowner is due to unique circumstances not created by the landowner. Again, the current property owners did not consolidate the parcels. Rural single-family zoning does not permit two primary dwelling units on a parcel, so by dividing the lots, the applicant would be making the property more conforming with the zoning standards. Moving on to character of locality, the third criteria. The proposed variance would not alter the essential character of the area. No construction or alteration of structures is proposed with this request. The proposal is adding a single invisible property line, so the essential character should not be negatively impacted. The final variance criteria is adjacent properties and traffic. The proposed variance will not impair adjacent properties or substantially increase congestion on a public street, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. Again, the property is to remain two single-family dwelling units. Variances should not negatively impair adjacent properties, property values, or congestion on the public street. So this application was sent out for agency review. We received comments on March 1st. The Valley Branch Watershed District indicated that a permit would be required for this request. The fire department provided comments regarding addressing of the two parcels. The city engineer provided comments regarding utilities and easements, and the DNR did not provide comments, although staff met with the DNR to discuss the request and determined conformance with the Minnesota DNR non-conforming shoreline lot standards. So then staff has added conditions where applicable for these agency comments. So there are seven recommended conditions before you. The first is to comply with the Minnesota DNR non-conforming shoreline lots. One of those restrictions is 25% impervious surface, so to maintain that consistency, that is a criteria staff is recommending. The second is for Lot 9, ensuring that the setback variances are for only existing structures, so new structures would need to meet current code requirements if they were removed and rebuilt. The third is that standard condition that permits must be obtained. The fourth is regarding the driveway segment removal on Lot 10. And then 5, 6, and 7 are from the fire department comments regarding addressing. A public hearing notice was sent to surrounding property owners on February 28th and published in the local paper on March 1st. City staff has not received any public comment at this time. With that, I can stand for questions, and we do have the applicant here tonight.
Thanks, Sophia. Questions for city staff?
So this, it's currently legal non-conforming, correct?
Correct.
And did the shoreline district setbacks change after these structures were built?
Likely.
Likely?
The property was planted in 1911.
Okay, so it was a while ago.
Built soon after, so I'm gonna assume yes.
Okay. So, I mean, the structures have been there for a long time. Shoreline district setback requirements have likely changed, and the structures are just legal non-conforming. Okay. That's the only question I had, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Sophia. Does the applicant wish to come up? Perfect, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. We have two of them, so just as a reminder for everybody, for these, there's paperwork. I've got a couple of them here, they're back in the door there. If anybody does wish to speak either on this public hearing or the one right after this, if you don't mind filling one of those out. And just for those that are new, or for repetition, for those that have been here for a bit, public hearings are an opportunity for you as a public to be able to speak, share your thoughts, opinions, et cetera. It's not a time for Q and A or back and forth. You're allotted up to six minutes, of which I'll usually give a one-minute countdown, and then give you a time, and we'll have to cut you off at that point just to be able to keep moving along through this evening. With that, this is a public hearing, so commissioners, we do need a motion to open.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Stiles, seconded by Commissioner Ray Camp to open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, and the public hearing for item 4A is open at 7:08 PM. As indicated here, we have no public comment early received. Don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, is there anybody here wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, we can take it back to the commissioners to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Stiles, seconded by Commissioner Jeffrey to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously, and the public hearing is now closed at 7:09 PM. At this point, we'll go back to the commissioners. There's a motion on the table. We can entertain that to move to discussion.
I move to recommend approval of lot division and variance request from David, terribly sorry, Schmokel and Sarah Johnson for the property located at 10997 32nd Street North with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Jeffrey, seconded by Commissioner Reese, to move to recommend approval of the lot division. Let's start with discussion. Commissioner Jeffrey?
Um, excuse me. Looks like staff has done a great job looking into this meets qualifications. Like, the idea that it's being brought back into conformance. That's about it. Pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Commissioner Reese?
If this was new structures that they were requesting modified setbacks in square-foot areas, I'd be a little more concerned, but these structures have been here longer than the shoreline district new setbacks and whatnot. And I'm encouraged by the fact that it was also two lots at one time, and it's going back to two lots. I don't have a lot of background on what the intent is to do with those lots, other than on the land application, the split applications that Mr. Schmokel will own one and Ms. Johnson will own the other. So for me, I don't see, and there was no feedback from any neighbors or any public at all, so, I mean, to me, it's acceptable to move it, to put it back the way that it was. I haven't seen any opposition to that.
Agreed. The work that city staff there to find the analysis and draft findings of this, like I said, difficulties weren't their own causing, the circumstances not created by the landowner, and doesn't change locale because it's an invisible line. It doesn't change traffic, so. Do we have any additional comments, discussion points? Okay. Hearing none, then we'll move to the vote. Again, the motion is to recommend approval of the lot division at 10997 32nd Street North with the conditions listed in the staff report. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. This will go to city council. Do we have a date?
We do. I don't recall it off the top of my head.
Okay. City staff will be in touch. Thank you very much. That concludes item 4A for this evening. We will move on to our second item, which is item 4B. Again, this is another public hearing on the birth and haven proposal, a comprehensive plan and zoning text amendments. Again, we'll start with city staff first before hearing from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant for tonight's comprehensive plan amendment and zoning text amendment is Melvin Ashford. He is representing Minnesota Women's Care. Minnesota Women's Care is also the current property owner of the site. The property is located at 5193 Keats, which is comprised of three PIDs. The property is currently zoned agriculture with a shoreline overlay and guided in the city's comp plan as ag preserve. There are two requests before you tonight. The first is to remove the ag preserve guidance and re-guide the parcels to rural area development. And the second request is to include birth center and postpartum retreat center in the city's ag district. So reviewing the first component of the request, the comprehensive plan amendment, the property, again, is currently guided ag preserve. The property, or ag preserve properties are reserved for properties that have agreements, properties with agreements in place that preserve the land for non-agriculture and restrict it from development. So the current property no longer has that ag preserve agreement in place. It expired in 1999. The city was notified in May of 2021 after the owner had passed away. So the staff is recommending to re-guide the parcels to rural area development to be consistent with the surrounding areas and the existing zoning district. Then I have a visual of what the comprehensive plan amendment is to entail, so that would be essentially eliminating that dark green hatching over those three parcels. And I will note that this is only for the future land use guidance. The zoning is to remain agriculture. Moving on to the second part of this request, the zoning text amendment. Again, the applicant is requesting to include birth center and postpartum retreat center in city code. Staff completed the intake of the application and reviewed the request, and then further revised the items to fit the district that they are being requested in. So the first zoning change would be to include these zoning definitions in code, so the birth center definition would be added. This definition is directly from state statute. Staff also is amending medical facilities to include birth centers as defined by state statute, which would cover the urban districts. And then staff revised the postpartum retreat request to change it to transitional care facilities. We reviewed other cities definitions to create this transitional care facility definition. And I do want to note that staff included an excerpt that would be excluding group residential facilities and halfway houses as defined elsewhere in code. So the second part of this request is to actually amend the use table 9-1. So as you can see, birth center and transitional care facility are included as C conditional uses in the agricultural zoning district. And then there's also references to the performance standards, which we'll dive into here shortly. So the third part of this request is amending the off-street parking regulations. So this is specifically for transitional care facilities, which would include two spaces per suite and then one space per employee on the largest shift. The birth center parking is covered by the performance standards in the rural districts, and then it would be covered by medical facilities if it were to occur in an urban district. And then moving on to the actual performance standards. So staff mimicked the non-ag low-impact regulations as closely as possible. The definition, or the performance standards are broken out similarly where they have standards, and then they have specific standards if it were to occur in a rural district. So for birth centers, all of them would need to be licensed by the state. And then if established in a rural district, they, medical, the only medical facility in a rural district would be a birth center. They would be exempt from the arterial or collector requirement and access point requirements, which is in the medical facilities code. And then it outlines parking regulations, and then outlines the parking lot screening, impervious surface requirements, and then a 200-foot buffer from residential structures. So that is for birth center. And then transitional care facility is again broken out in the same way where the first two would be if it were established anywhere. So that would be that the underlying lot areas met, and that transitional care facility is limited to 10 rooms. And then if established in a rural district, that it could be combined with a birth center, and then it outlines the same parking lot screening, impervious surface, and buffer. So moving on, I do want to state that zoning text amendments and comprehensive plan amendments are legislative decisions, so this is where the city has the most control over approval or amending the requests. In this case, the comp plan amendment is site-specific to those three PIDs. The zoning text amendment would apply to all properties zoned agriculture, which on this zoning map is the dark green. Moving on to the findings and conditions for the comp plan request. There are four findings for the comp plan. The first is that the procedure and process was followed. The second is what the actual request is for, which is re-guiding from ag preserve to rural area development. The third is stating that the property is no longer in the ag preserve program. And the fourth is that it is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's comp plan. There is one recommended condition, and that would be that if approved by the city, it would need to be approved by Met Council. Moving on to the zoning text amendment findings and conditions, there are two findings. So for the city to approve the zoning text amendment, it must find that the request is consistent with the agricultural zoning district and consistent with the city's future land use definition. So with the amendments that staff has made, staff is generally supportive of the text amendment request. And then there are no recommended findings or conditions, apologies. This application was sent out for agency review. The Valley Branch Watershed District indicated that no permit is required, but they would want to review the CUP if the project does move forward. The DNR and city engineer did not provide any comments. And then a public hearing was sent to surrounding property owners on February 28th and published in the local paper on March 1st. We received seven comments. Oh, instead of going through them, just generally, they were related to traffic concerns, nuisances created by light and noise, septic and medical waste, environmental and wildlife concerns, inconsistency with the zoning district and city's comprehensive plan, concerns with what is going to happen with the remaining acreage on the site, and then utility specifically water. With that, I have two recommended motions before you. I can stand for any questions, and we do have a representative for the applicant here tonight.
Quick clarification on the AP. Has that been removed, or by pushing this, or by moving to recommend, and then if it goes to city council and they approve, that's when the AP gets removed?
The actual agreement was terminated in 1999.
Okay. So there's no action or removal that happens from our motions? It's expired in 99?
Correct.
And then, would you mind kind of double-clicking into our agricultural zoning?
The...
The text amendments of it? Just reading some of the comments and what I'm expecting will come up here in terms of how this fits with the agricultural zoning amendment?
Correct. Yeah, we do have, most of the property zoned agriculture is for residential and farming purposes, but we do have properties that are non-ag and commercial in nature.
And I think the pack could kind of talk to you, the things that are off of 36 as an example of some of those, right?
Correct.
Same zoning, okay. Thank you. Questions for Sophia?
Within the text, Sophia, how are the capacities determined? When you say four beds for birthing center, 10 for recovery?
Correct.
How are those numbers generated?
Derived from the applicant's request.
Okay, so, right, so we're matching the text to meet exactly what the applicant's looking for. Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Thanks, Sophia. Does the applicant wish to come speak? And if you don't mind, just name and address for the record and those mics, just to make sure everybody can hear as best as you can speak into it.
Yeah. Good evening. My name's Audrey Kopp. I am actually a Lake Elmo resident. I live at 2040 Manning Trail North, Lake Elmo. I am employed by Minnesota Women's Care and the owner of that practice being Melvin Ashford, so I'm here on his behalf, giving kind of an overview of the project. He is unfortunately out of town, so he was not able to make this meeting, but he is listening on speaker. So overview of the project in terms of the medical side of things, because that's where I come in, I'm actually a midwife, so I deliver babies currently with the practice in a hospital setting, and now our group is hoping to bring into our fold an out-of-hospital birth experience, and midwives are kind of the leading charge on that across the country. So brief overview of out-of-hospital birth, there are no surgical suites, there is no anesthesia administered. The people who are deciding to deliver in these spaces are low-risk women who may in fact qualify for delivering at home, but they're choosing to deliver in a space that is not in their own home and is not in a hospital, that fits this middle ground, and they're able to have skilled practitioners with them to ensure that they have a safe delivery. Research has really come out as the way that we're gonna help change maternity care in this country is to start moving low-risk women out of the hospital setting and into a birth center setting where, if they're making that choice, where they are able to have easy access to coping mechanisms and skilled practitioners. Rates of cesarean section are lower, all of the rates across the board for helping women and keeping their babies safe as well are lower when we think about that. So that's kind of our background in terms of maternity care in a brief sense. Birth centers themselves, when they are entered into, the person delivering is in active labor already, so her stint in terms of how long she's in labor is typically very short when she enters the facility. And then most typically after delivery, people are discharged most typically within 12 hours of that delivery. Our project, that kind of haven side of things, does look to give people a little bit more, longer access to some supportive care after they deliver. If we think about numbers of what we're kind of looking for on the medical side of things, this is not a high traffic or high number facility. There are not a lot of people coming and going throughout the day. Goals might be to have 30 births a month, you know, as we kind of start out, just as like a baseline what we would look for. This is not something that's going to handle hundreds of people coming in to deliver that. You can't physically do that because staff are one-to-one with women as they go through this process. And if we think about that, that's goal maybe one or two a day, and those people are not coming and going. And then we think about emergency services, under 10% of births done in a hospital setting have emergency transfers, and most of those are non-urgent emergency transfers, meaning no lights and sirens, and sometimes people are able to actually drive themselves to the hospital. The haven side of things, looking to expand covering postpartum care for people, because that actually, when we think about maternal morbidity and mortality in this country, is where we're losing many women, whether it be mental health crises, hypertension, those type of medical things that pop up postpartum. And expanding that into people who maybe need a respite when they're pregnant, using this space that has such natural beauty to not destroy that, to not change or alter that beauty that's there, to very much try to protect that and use the healing aspect of nature, both during labor and birth and postpartum, or antipartum when people are still pregnant and they maybe need to come in and find that healing rest, they're trying to improve their health. So that piece of it, I think, is very important for us, is to be respectful of nature in the way that, you know, we apply to use this space. It's at the forefront of our minds because it is very important for the goal of the project, to use nature, to use a calm, quiet environment, keeping lights low, keeping things, you know, not high skyscraper-type buildings, that's not what we're talking about here. So that's kind of the big overview from the medical side of things. Obviously, I'm not doing city water and all of those decisions, I'm doing the deliveries. So that's kind of where I come from, and in this project, Dr. Ashford pulled me in to focus on being kind of the clinical director, so ensuring safety and ensuring that we're practicing to the highest standard that we can when it comes to keeping women and their babies and their families safe.
Thanks, Audrey.
Thank you.
Any questions? Audrey, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for Audrey?
Audrey, I don't know if you can answer this, but maybe Mr. Ashford can. When your organization purchased this land, did they do it with the intent on creating a birthing center?
Correct.
And were you aware of any of the zoning challenges that you might run into with this land, or was it just kind of a blind purchase and said, you know, we can make it work?
That I would let Dr. Ashford try to answer. He was involved in the purchase directly, I was not part of that.
Okay. And then do you know if you met with any adjacent property owners or neighbors before submitting this application at all?
I also don't know the answer to that. Our architectural team who's here may know kind of the steps of that application, and if there were conversations that happened.
Okay, thank you.
And then, so for clarity's sake, I think you kind of touched on it, but overarching goal there is to preserve as much of the current land as possible? Okay.
Yep, absolutely. The forefront goal of the point of, you know, using this piece of property is to use nature and respect it and create a space that maintains as much of that as possible, and the lake space that's on there being kind of that central focal point, not trying to surround that with buildings, trying to maintain walking space and all of that.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, perfect. Thanks, Audrey, much appreciated. All right, so back to commissioners, again, this is a public hearing, so we'll need a motion to open?
Move to open the public hearing.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Stiles, seconded by Commissioner Reese to open the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, and the public hearing is now open at 7:28 PM. Again, one more reminder, if anybody does wish to speak that hasn't already filled out a form, you can go ahead and grab one of those and do so. I'll call them up as they were handed to me. Again, I'll give you six minutes, I'll give you a one-minute countdown, or a one-minute reminder there not to be... I'll give you a one-minute countdown, or a one-minute reminder there, not to be rude, but to keep things moving along. And again, it's your opportunity to speak. It's not a Q&amp;A back and forth, so any questions that are asked are rhetorical in nature. We'll just let a couple of those here pop in before we call up the first people. And for whoever, sorry, can't remember who handed me, it looks like city staff did capture the email in their records. Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and call up the first person. I'll call the name, and if you don't mind, again, the mics, got to speak into it a little bit so everybody can hear, but just repeat name and address for the record as well. We'll start with Mel.
Yeah, Mel Edgeray, way 4890 Keats Avenue North. I heard about this through the grapevine, because you only notify people 350 feet from the property, and you also put it in the Gazette, and like, who gets the Stillwater Gazette anymore? And I don't know why you didn't notify everybody at Keats Avenue about this. I think you need to change your policy, how you notify people about stuff being built. This is not like 1960 anymore. It's, you know, it's 2023. I first sent an email, me and my wife were against it, because the traffic, the changing of the land use, medical, there's a septic, the water use, and rad development, area development, that's fancy terminology, but it's business. And yeah, they're saying they're only going to do that, but you've got 60 acres that can be developed now underneath rad development. And what happens if they close down? Are you going to rezonate, or somebody else buys it? It's going to stay rad development, so you open up a can of worms. It's an rural area. Getting out on 36 in rush hour, I don't even attempt it. I go 50th Street over to Stillwater. I take through the neighborhood, over the Vinova Road, to do the J-turn, which is a lot of fun during rush hour. Even in the morning, it's not a battle to get out on 36. So there's not no easy traffic flow on Keats anymore, and I would not see how this would benefit the area where houses. I rent out 10 acres of my land for farms, so I know it's, to me, it's, makes no sense for this area.
Thank you, Mel. Next, I've got John Ames.
Commissioners, my name is John Ames. I live at 979951 First Street North, and I have sat in seats like yours when contentious issues have come up. I served on the Parks Commission for 19 years, including two terms as chair. And I'm opposed to this proposal for a couple of reasons. The first is zoning has to mean something. And I grew up in the country in Maine, where there was no zoning, and anybody could do whatever they wanted with their property. If you want to put a mobile home next to your house, you can do it. If you want to run a business out of your garage, you can do it. There's no control over how land was developed. And I understand there is a measure of control here, but it's important to think about the property as it exists and what's being proposed. What's being proposed is not a residential property. It's a commercial property with employees and customers, surrounded by rural land and homes. And it's not an excellent place to introduce that as a pattern. There are small businesses on Keats Avenue that sell pumpkins seasonally. This is very different than that. And while I support the mission of the applicant, you all have to consider that what they're starting out aiming at in terms of numbers is not what the building would support. You all have to look at if the building is continuously full, and these are short stays, which means high turnover. And so, with zoning needing to mean something, the other thing that is super important here is safety has to mean something. I've lived on this, in this neighborhood for 23 years. Keats Avenue was repaved several years ago with curb and gutter, and essentially no shoulder. The shoulder is approximately 18 inches wide. I ran there today. I saw many other pedestrians walking on the edge where there's, there's no sidewalk, there's no trail, there's no shoulder. And when there are cars coming in both directions, there's no room for a pedestrian at all. It's not a safe place to introduce higher volume of traffic. It's not a safe place to introduce delivery trucks. There will be emergency calls here, so introducing ambulance trips, introducing trucks to remove medical waste, et cetera. All these will be introduced with this proposal. In addition, as the previous commenter mentioned, the intersection of Keats and 36 is a well-known safety concern as it exists today. MINDOT is well-aware of this challenge. A stop sign on a 65 mile an hour highway is suboptimal. I'm putting it kindly. And what will happen here is people who are not used to the area and not used to that intersection will be asked to make the left turn coming from Stillwater across oncoming traffic, which is not ideal, or to pull out east towards Stillwater and accelerate rapidly to 70 miles an hour, which is also not ideal. The final thing that I think about here is the people who live and drive on that road have a vested interest in the safety of that road, because we live there, and the people walking on the side of the road are our neighbors. What will be introduced are expectant parents excited to get to the delivery of their child, and I know how I drove for the delivery of my first child, and I didn't follow the speed limit. And also, employees running late for a shift. I support the mission of the applicant. I just don't believe this is the right setting for that to be delivered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. All right. Next, Jane?
I'm Jane Charles. I live on 47th. My mailing address is post office box 769, Stillwater, Minnesota. I use that address because I've had issues with stalkers. I'm hoping that you've received the letter that I wrote and had a chance to review it. I also included an overlay that I was given by the Valley Branch. It shows that the current buildings on this site are all within the flood zone, 100-year flood zone. So it's clear that they're going to be needing to build new buildings in there and remove the ones that are there. I understand that there are laws that support the water and the lake there, but I'm opposed to this for a lot of different reasons. We have a water quality problem already in Lake Elmo. This is in a location where we aren't experiencing problems yet, but I'm concerned, if you put a commercial-sized septic system on top of this little lake and it fails, just like tapestry is failing, we're going to have an environmental catastrophe there. That lake supports a lot of wildlife. I see sandhill cranes coming in and out, trumpeter swans. I mean, it's just everything in there, and it's not just a couple birds, it's flocks of them. And I'm afraid, when you have a commercial business in there and the exposure to the amount of light, this business is going to be 24/7, year-round. This isn't like, you turn off the lights at 5 o'clock in the afternoon and you're done. These people are going to be there. And so the light pollution is probably my biggest concern there in terms of supporting the environment and the animals that live in this area. This property, I wanted to make a correction. This property was bought in August of 1988. They lived in this property and created a trust. They placed this property in AP in 1209 of 1999. They put it in a trust to their son in 1127 of 2017. The AP was terminated on 58 of 2021. And then the property was sold on 1012 of 2023 to a business. And again, I'm opposed, because this is a rural residential area. If you look at the map, and you can see that everything surrounding this property is rural residential. This is one of the last big chunks of land, and so I guess I'm just opposed overall, they're not going to be living on the property, so they're not going to have the same vested interest in caring for the environment that us neighbors do. She talked about how important it was for their clientele to be close to nature, but she didn't really address anything about being a good neighbor. And what they're going to do to care for the property, and care for the environment, and care for the lake, I just don't imagine that pregnant and postpartum ladies are walking 62 acres of property. So do they really need to have that large of a scale of a property for the type of business that they're running? And I really feel like this business should be on a sewer, city sewer, and water. I mean, the amount of waste and from the volume of people, the size of the septic system that needs to be in there, it's just not, it's just not compatible with this particular piece of land, the flood zone, and the amount of pressure on that environment. I'm also concerned about property values. I'm glad I'm not the neighbor right next door to this property, because I don't want that in my backyard, all the light and all the people coming all the time. I also want to just let you know that they have major clinics in, this is not a small startup business. This is a major organization. They have clinics in Hudson, and Woodbury, and Maplewood, and they're in the middle of a major expansion on their clinic in Woodbury. So this is just another foot in the door to expand their property to a larger scale at a later point in time. I guess those are my main points, and I guess I just, again, want to say I'm opposed to the idea of having a commercial business in a agricultural-zoned property area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Sophia. And Jane, just for your notice, your letter that you sent was received by city staff and in the packet, so, record. Yeah. I have Carmen next.
My name is Carmen Thompson. My address is 5170 Kirkwood Avenue North. I oppose having this commercial business in our rural residential. My property backs up to the property on the east side. We love our darkness. We see the owls. We see the eagles during the day. We see all of the wildlife there. The fox, the coyotes, the rabbits, the squirrels, you name it, everything is there. This is going to make a huge introduction of light and business movement and everything within the community, so I support everyone else's perspectives. The other thing it's going to do is, eventually, we don't know what Keats and 36 is going to be like in three years when the 1736 interchange is completed by the Minnesota DOT. Does that mean then traffic comes down 17 south, crosses 50th, which leads to my street, and then jogs down 47th and goes over to Keats? Also, right now, no streetlights. It's a wonderful rural residential area. You're going to have streetlights in every one of those corners in order to have people to come in and out, in order to make it through. I also have concerns, as some have said to it, are we going to have assessments? Is it going to be on city sewer and water, where that is not there now? I agree with John in the fact that it is a dangerous road. I used to come off of 36 when I worked, came down Keats, and came to my house. But there constantly are walkers, people want to be out, and there is no room for anyone to be on that road. It is rural residential, rural agricultural. I would please make it be that way. We have enough medical and commercial corridors within Lake Elmo that a business that wants to, you've got Eagle Point, you've got High Point, then real close by, if the hospital moves to Manning and 36, you've got another medical area. These things, this could be located much closer to that. I also have a question as to women's care. It says Minnesota Women's Care on your information here, but when I looked on the county website, it was Metro OBGYN was the purchasing, or the owners of the property. I guess I'm a little confused on that, if it's just a subsidy of it, or if it is that. And then the other thing that comes to mind is, once you have a small medical business in the middle of all this rural space, we only have sheriff's coverage right now, and I hope that we can keep the not-so-honest people out. But you have this business, it's sitting there by itself. What is the security for that business? We don't have regular police like Stillwater and Woodbury and Maplewood does. We don't have that kind of coverage. There are going to be some drugs on hand. That doesn't say that there isn't going to be some nefarious people that decide to come into our Lake Elmo area and see what they can get. I don't want that in my neighborhood. We all have to deal with what someone may come into and rob a house, but I don't want to have these other drugs and things that are there and the business that is there open 24/7. I think that's a big disruption to everything, whether it's the people or whether it's the nature that we have here. And I don't want to find out in five years, 10 years, across the street, when they decide to take and break up some of their stuff that is now being plowed. I know I have a commercial business across on my front door, because the zonings are changed, because somebody bought it, because they want to be in the country, but we don't know what that's going to be. And I guess part of that then also leads to the question of, what is our overall look at Lake Elmo? What are we trying to build? Are we trying to just let anybody move into any little square they want? And then, all the people that do live there now have to pay for all the assessments to support these new businesses? Whereas Eagle Point and High Point already have all those services available, they have all the access available in order to get to those businesses. We don't have to worry about new streetlights, we don't have to worry about that city sewer, we don't have to worry about the access off the main arteries. Businesses and commercial, I think, should be on your, you could put it on County 14, right in downtown Lake Elmo, that would be fine. That's an artery that goes through. We've got our Hudson Road artery down where High Point is, you've got 13 where Eagle Point is, put it along 36. And you've got 14 coming all the way into Baytown Township. There are a lot of areas a business could be, but I don't think smack dab in the middle of a rural residential area, agricultural area, is where it should be placed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I've got Robert Meyer.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Robert Meyer. I'm at 5220 Keats Avenue North, which is right across the street, actually, from the proposed. We have an eight-acre parcel there. We've, actually, I've looked at that spot for some time, but actually, it was our farm right across the street, when that was actually a turkey farm. I, again, support the mission of the agency of what they're trying to do, but I don't believe this is the location. I think you've heard numerous comments about it, but, you know, we really do not have commercial infrastructure on Keats Avenue, both, I think, in the transportation area as well as in the sewer area. And I think commercial development requires, you know, that kind of infrastructure to operate well. The other thing is, this is, this particular agricultural parcel is surrounded by all residential parcels, and it's kind of an unusual thing. So, to me, to put a commercial thing really seems to be inconsistent, I think, with the policies of the city as well as the comprehensive plan. I'm kind of curious that DNR did not comment. I would actually think that the city ought to try to get some comment from DNR about the potential impact of a commercial establishment. And I know while it's limited right now, what are the expansion possibilities? In other words, what is this going to really turn out to be? And so, I think, let's not go into this blind, let's, or have the camel get his nose in the tent, so to say. Let's see what this is really going to roll out to be. Their other facilities are larger than what's being proposed here, and so we can only guess that over time, if this is successful, it will be expanded. There was an assessment by staff of low impact. Actually, I'd like Actually, I'd like to see that assessment and what the criteria are and what is consisted with, you know, what, um, what that consists of. Because being a neighbor or being around this area and having a rather large commercial operation across the street does not to us be low impact, whether it's on the environment or it's on our lives, on our streets. And finally, I have a procedure question. This is proposing to change the use of transportation land, I believe, in the city. Is that correct? In other words, I think it produces or is adding addition to this. Does a notice also include those other agricultural parcels in the city? Have they also been notified of this potential expanded use? It's a question, actually.
We won't be able to do questions at this time, but it's, it's, it's noted and we'll address it when we bring it back.
Again, I think, I support the mission certainly of birth centers. I just do not think that this is the location where that birth center ought to be built. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, Richard?
Didn't want to try that last name, huh? It's Richard Egerstark.
I was trying to keep writing notes at the same time.
That's okay, that's okay.
Thank you.
Um, I live at ninety-nine-sixty-fifty-seventh Street North in Lake Elmo. It's on a corner of Fifty-seventh and, and, uh, Keats Avenue, so I live right on Keats. And, uh, one of my first complaints is not hearing about this type of stuff. This is the second engagement that I've been up here in the last month and I had to find out the hard way through neighbors or whatever at the very last minute. The last one was NYPD landscaping that was found in violation. And, uh, at the last minute I found out about it. Here's another example of this, uh, rather substantial development going to happen just down the road from me. Didn't hear a word. I guess it's, I'm past three hundred feet or whatever it is, or six hundred, but anyways, um, I concur with everyone that's spoken so far in regard to safety and, and opposing this project, living on that corner and, uh, walking on Keats quite frequently. It is very dangerous because there is no sidewalk. And I also agree with the fact that, um, um, definitely support the, the idea of having birthing centers because if we didn't, well, none of us would be here. But anyways, um, there's a, there's a place for them and, and, uh, off of Keats Avenue is not one of them. So anyways, I just wanted to support the other people because I really didn't have time to engage in the two documents that were thirty-seven some pages long and in such a short time. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Richard. Uh, next I've got Pat. Barrett?
I'm Pat Barrett. I live at ninety-six ninety-two fifty-seventh Street North. First, I'd like to thank the commission for all the work and time you put in volunteering for twice a month. And all the meetings that you go through with people who aren't happy with what's going on. Appreciate that effort. I'd like to, um, be brief. I'd like to let you know that I oppose this on a number of different fronts. I walk and bike on Keats often. In fact, I was biking in there this afternoon. And as others have said, it's really dangerous. When I'm walking and cars come from both directions, I have to jump up, off the curb in, in order to feel safe. Cars are going at high speeds and it's just not on Sundays when Rock Point is emptying out. It's, it's during, during the week and I can't imagine what more traffic from all the other supportive things, you know, staff and delivery and stuff will do to Keats. I'm concerned about the water use. We have two, two issues, you know, with, with the quality of our, our water and plus we are close to the one-hundred-year floodplain too with water coming up. Homes have been in the Lake Elmo area have been bought by the watershed district because of the high water levels and Clear Lake is really low and it, with it being in the floodplain, I think that can be an issue, uh, as it has been in the past few years. I, I don't have issue with, with the business itself. I think it sounds like a great idea. I just don't think it's, it's a viable option for our neighborhood, for rural residential neighborhood. This is a commercial operation that doesn't belong here at all. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. Uh, Gillian Anderson?
Hello, thank you for this opportunity. My name's Gillian Anderson. I am at nine-eight-six-one fifty-first Street North, so just across the street from the property in question. Um, and my husband and I are new to the area, less than six months. And I just wanted to let, you know, we do oppose this rezoning and not because of the mission of the organization, but primarily because when we were looking for a place to move to and we wanted to be East Metro, we were looking to move away from businesses and we were looking to move out and, um, away from commercial areas or any area that had anyone who was transient, whether you're transient because you're a customer and you're coming and going, or maybe you're in, um, a rental situation. We wanted to be rooted somewhere and we wanted to know the people around us were rooted. Um, so while the organization itself sounds wonderful and I'm a firm believer in nature being able to heal a lot of things, I would ask that we don't consider this for our neighborhood because just simply the nature of people are coming and going and, um, the midwife who spoke said about twelve hours for delivery. Well, if there's, you know, four delivery suites and three parking spots per suite and we're looking at a twelve-hour window where people would be on site, that's transient. And then if we take that further and it's ten suites for people who are more transitional care, and I don't even know the length of time on that because I too just heard about this yesterday and I didn't have time to wade through the, the document, but I appreciate it being provided to us. Um, it's just not something where, we wouldn't have come here had we known we were moving across the street from something that would be a, a business situation. Or we would have looked at other areas closer to the business parks that I was aware of in Lake Elmo such as Eagle, Eagle Point. Um, so wanted to just let you know that people are drawn to this area because of the residential, um, and the nature and all of these things that we would like to offer to everyone if we could, but it just doesn't seem just for the people who, um, who pay the property taxes and who are concerned about the value of their home and their safety. I like to know that the people I'm passing on the street are my neighbors and I know who they are and they know who I am, especially as someone new to the area. They can tell me if, you know, someone is in front of my house that shouldn't be there because they know who's on our dead-end street. And, um, I, I have a great concern of that myself, um, just in general. And I think knowing that there have been more issues in Lake Elmo, especially recently, like I just got a notice yesterday that there were several break-ins only two miles from where we are. Um, I, I do have great concern about introducing more people and more traffic, uh, into the area where we're already kind of out of the way, but all of a sudden more highly visible to people who are not necessarily doing good things. I think specifically also to the standpoint of, of infrastructure and lighting and all of this, you can't have any business without throwing up lights for the safety of those who work there and those who patronize the business. So all of that darkness and the quiet, um, it, it's gone if we're throwing up parking lots and lighting and, and all of that. And, um, I too have a great concern for pedestrians on Keats. Um, one of the first things we noticed when we moved here is we liked that people moved over for us when we were in the shoulder, just like we do for them. And, um, I, I do worry that if you're not regularly used to being on two-lane roads without sidewalks as you have in the city or as you have in other suburbs, you don't know that, you don't know what that's like to be on the side of the road and see a car coming at you at a good deal of speed and they're just bearing straight down where if I just move over a little bit, if I can, that walker or that bicycle person knows that I see them and I'm not going to hit them. And so all of these things, just coming from someone who's quite new to the area and we love it here and, um, we would just like to see it remain residential. Because as I said, had we wanted to be moving across from businesses, we would have stayed where we were. Um, it's just not what, what we're looking for or what we thought we were getting really. Um, and if we have all of these concerns now, just wondering about the infrastructure and the safety and all of this, just by the idea of rezoning to begin with, then if we're as concerned as we are now, knowing what the proposal is, what happens once we change the zoning and again to other people's points? We don't know what will happen in the future. We open it up now and expansion and who knows what, um, could come. So thanks for the opportunity and thanks to all my neighbors who I look forward to meeting soon.
Thanks, Carolyn. Got a couple more here. Uh, Rod Sessing?
Good evening. My name is Rod Sessing. I live at fifty-six ninety-nine Keats Avenue, just north about five pieces of property toward, toward Thirty-Six. To plop a commercial entity in the middle of a residential area on ag land really hurts the rural part of Lake Elmo. I went on the website today to look for what rural area development means. I could not find a definition on the website. Maybe I missed it, but I know back when I was on planning commission, we had to have definitions for everything that was spelled out. So I'd like to know what that definition is, if we have it. A lot of people try and get ag land to do commercial property, one to avoid the taxes. That is a big thing, big change from going from a commercial site to a agricultural site. Taxes are way less. Now, what Lake Elmo needs to consider in the future is the lost revenue of taxes from residential housing in that area. If they did a cluster development there, that would be an awful lot of money to support Lake Elmo compared to what they would get from just one conditional use permit. So that's, that's something we really need to look at because obviously everybody hears taxes are going up. We hate to take away the revenue and have ours go up more. It is unfortunate that he bought this property without knowing whether this was allowable or not. That's really strange that someone would do that. I know the church behind me, there was conditions of the sale of the property that they had to be able to build on it before they bought it. If that is unfortunate, it does not, it shouldn't bother us as far as Lake Elmo residents, but that's a gamble he took that is a little different. We as Lake Elmo residents need to make sure that we stay as rural as we can. Obviously, we know we're developing, but to take agricultural land for a commercial purpose is not what Lake Elmo is about. Only a couple pieces on Thirty-Six have that rating. We don't need them all over in the middle of residential. They talk about a birthing center. Uh, I do a lot of medical buildings and Minnesota Department of Health is going to have to inspect this facility. If, and to use a piece of, uh, an existing building that's really old to start doing birthing centers is going to be a little strange for them. It's going to take an awful lot of work, probably would be a total gut job if not tear it down and rebuild. Now, if they do any additions, if you're in that hun- one-hundred-year floodplain, now they shouldn't be able to add on at all. So now that's restricting even more for the owner. If they think they, once they get their foot in, the restrictions really come off of them. So you've got to be really careful, make your plan and follow that plan, not just uh, jump and put little pieces here and there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Robert. Uh, Karen Schubert?
Hi, I'm Karen Schubert and I live at fifty-two-twenty-two Keats Avenue North, across the street from that property. I am unfortunately not as well-prepared as I'd like to be because I'm the only person who did not get the letter. And according to, when I inquired with the city, apparently it's the post office's fault. So here I am and I'd just like to tell you that I'm opposed to this project. I don't have a problem with a birthing center. It's probably a great idea, but not in a rural area such as this. There's a lake down there. Yes, city water goes down Keats Avenue, but as far as I know, it's on its own septic system. And for a birthing center to have to rely on a septic system, which means that the septic system probably would need to be pumped out more often than the two years I have to do it. Uh, the other thing I'm concerned about, having lived there for forty-seven years and seeing Keats Avenue change dramatically from a gravel road to an access road to several developments in Highway Thirty-Six. There are times when I get to the end of my driveway, my car shakes because there are cars zipping by. There's already a fair amount of traffic. To have even more traffic that potentially is going pretty fast is just not a good idea for that area. There are residences all around the property. And a commercial thing like that is just a little bit too much of an impact on the area. A couple of the, the gentlemen who spoke earlier made some really excellent points and I do hope that you will seriously consider every one of those concerns. Mine are pretty much the same as what the previous people have stated, so there's no need to repeat them. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, was it Corinne? Is that Corinne? Corinne? Perfect. Apologies for mispronouncing twice. Uh, and the last one I have here is Claudia?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Um, my name is Claudia Standard. I live at fifty-two-thirty Keats Avenue North, also directly across from the property. Um, I think just like other people have said, I agree with many of the comments about safety and also oppose this project. Um, I think one thing that hasn't really been stated yet, unless I was zoning out a little bit at that time, was that babies aren't really born between the hours of nine to five, they are born at any time. That means that people are going to be coming and going from this property, not only deliveries for laundry, deliveries for possible food. I don't know what the plan is for food at the facility. Time, people coming and going to visit or coach a woman in labor, uh, that can happen at any time of the day or night. Additionally, regardless of whether or not these are low-risk births, um, every birth and every child can, and in ways that we don't anticipate or want, and that means emergency vehicles also coming up and down the road. The midwife did state that that would not be often because of the quote-unquote low-risk births, but we don't really know what that means and nobody can entirely anticipate that. Hopefully that would be true, of course, but ambulances would be another concern. I think that, um, medical waste and waste in general with bigger trucks coming in and out to take out garbage and other waste from a facility such as this, if there are one to two babies born each day, that is thirty to sixty a month. That isn't, I don't think that that's a small amount. I think that that's a pretty big amount. Yeah, I think this also, other people have mentioned this, I think that there's a precedent that this creates for other possibilities of commercial use. It's a rural area, like we have all said, the size of the road really can't manage extra deliveries and possible emergency vehicles, um, noise pollution, light pollution, all of the things that would disrupt the serenity of the area. Sure, it would be lovely for a person to deliver a baby in a quiet place and without, not trying to sound rude, but I'm wondering why this wouldn't happen at people's homes if it's only going to be- wouldn't happen at people's homes if it's only going to be a four-bed facility with three parking spaces per bedroom. So those are my concerns, and I appreciate you listening to all the neighbors and people who it sounds like resoundingly oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Slinger?
Good evening, Adam Slinger, 9849 59th Street Court North. Resident of Lake Elmo. I grew up in Lake Elmo and Lake Elmo Avenue, just north of the Christmas Street Farm. So I know rural residential, where we have 400-plus houses. I used to pick rock on those fields. I know this farm. I know George Daggie. Spent time out on there, hunted the property. I live just north of there. I work from home. I work for a medical company. So my office, I look at 36 every day. I hear crashes. I see people die. I've seen crashes there. You have people coming in. I think it'd be interesting to do a study to see, pick 100 random people and give them the address, coming from all over the metro, whether it's east metro, south metro, west metro. Give them the address, see how many tries it takes. When they pass Keats, where do they go? They're frantic. The midwife made a statement that most time, patients that are coming into that facility will be inactive labor, like others have stated. I didn't drive the speed limit. I wanted to get there right away. You're going to have folks from all over the metro, so now we're opening it up. You know, it is rural residential for that. Another question I have is with, within Lake Elmo, they're very strict on spot zoning. It's not allowed. I've talked to the city planner multiple times about it. My folks have 10 acres on Lake Elmo Avenue. That two-mile section is required to have 10 acres. Quarter mile up the street, there's 300 houses. Why can't I split it to two fives? Here, we have a 62-acre parcel. That's beautiful. Right now, it's three different plats, three different farms could go on there, three different addresses. It'd be great. I'm all for it. Not commercial. You're going to have people going in, going out 24/7. Who's going to maintain the streets? We're going to have salt, so runoff. They're going to manicure the lawn, I guarantee it. I know the health center over in Woodbury, very nice place. He's done a phenomenal job. I'm not against the business. You know, just next to White Hat would be a great spot, I think. You know, Gorman's, that empty field. Put it up there. Easy access. I don't think in the middle of the rural residential area is where it should be. So I 100% opposing the location. I'm all for the business, but do it in the right spot. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Bridgette?
Hi, my name is Bridgette Eubank, and I'm at 9960 57th Street North. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but in support of everybody else who's had some great points, I think it is important. I, too, think this is a wonderful idea of what they want to do. And I really picked up on what the gal who presented the information said, was that their goal is to have this be a calm, quiet sanctuary with respecting nature. That's wonderful. It's beautiful. But what happens to all of us residents? Why do we have to pay the price? And why, at the expense of one property for commercial use, now being able to enjoy their nature, their calm, their sanctuary at the expense of what we will now experience? I don't need a touch on safety. I don't need a touch on crime. I don't need a touch on traffic. Everybody has done a great job of saying that, but I don't think it's right for one piece of property to have that negative an impact on the rest of us, where they get to enjoy a small cluster of people who are paying to enjoy a calm, quiet sanctuary. And the rest of us have to pay the price and lose that. So just please take that into consideration when you make your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridgette. That's the bottom of my pile. Did we miss anybody? Did you fill out one of the sheets? What's that? Yep, you're welcome to. And same as them, if you don't mind, name and address representation.
Good evening, Commissioners. Dan Noyer with Blumenthal's Architecture. We're a small firm in Minneapolis, northeast Minneapolis. And I was there that day when Dr. Ashford showed up at the site. I went to meet him. So did my colleagues. And he started talking about this project. And I was, I was like, what are you talking about? This is commercial you're talking about in a residential area? And it took a little while for him to compel me, but after we went back to the office and started to dig into it and realized that these birthing centers are not commercial in nature. In fact, 99% of them are sought after to be placed in residential and rural areas because of the vision and the mission for it. And these countries, excuse me, all of these communities are thriving. We've got a ton of research that proves that. This was all news to me, but Dr. Ashford and his group have done their research. For example, in St. Peter, Birth Haven just opened up, which is right within the city, cont fabric itself in a Victorian home. So just the idea of the commercial nature of it, it's striving to be a residential and a rural setting for its use. So the CUP and the text amendment allows for four beds within the Birth Haven, and we're applying for three. So I just wanted to make that clear. The vision will not be to expand because we can't, because the wording within the text amendment states that four beds is the max. And as far as the haven part of it, we asked for nine beds. That's what we were thinking, and therefore, the limit is put at 10. So I just wanted to state that clearly. One comment came up about the Minnesota Department of Health and the commission for accreditation of birth centers. All of the accreditation goes through them. It gets sent to the Minnesota Department of Health, and they rubber stamp it if the commission says it's okay. So just wanted to get that process kind of spelled out. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. John? We'll use remaining time. I think you had a couple of minutes left, so. And again, you've already done it once, but once again, name it again, please.
John Ames, 9799 51st Street North, Lake Elmo. Thanks for the additional 30 seconds. I know that you gave an opportunity for the applicant on the front end, and that, then that gave us an opportunity to respond to that. And there's something just said that I have to point out. A place, a structure, that has employees and customers is a business. You can try to call it other things, but it's a business. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. All right, perfect. Giving a moment there of pause. Again, we've gotten through the stack. The written comments have been accepted and brought in through the city staff in our report. At that point, we will need to go back to the Commissioners to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing at 8:18.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Stiles, seconded by Commissioner Geffrey to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Public hearing is now closed at 8:18. At this point, this will go back to the Commissioners. We have two motions on the table. One, again, is for the... Did we? Oh, you're just coming back to that.
Yep.
Two of them up there. We will have to take these separately. And appointed clarifications will be, so for this, regardless of how this goes, again, our recommendations are going up to the city council. They'll make the final decisions here. Even if this does go forward and the zoning text amendments are adopted, they're still going to have to come back with CUP to apply for the actual center and the change and...
Correct.
So there would be another public hearing at that point as well?
Correct. If this is approved, they would need a CUP, which would require planning commission, public hearing notice, and city council action.
And then to build on that, then that's when we would get into the other questions, such as the sewer, or what that would look like at that point if it moves forward. So we're just voting tonight on the amendments.
Correct. Specific site layout and conditions would be addressed at the time of this conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Sophia, so the agriculture preserve designation is lost because it's tied to a contract that's no longer in effect. Is that correct?
Correct.
So all the land that we've got designated, whether it's this parcel or other parcels within the city boundaries, that are designated as AP, they have to be under contract. And once they're not under contract, because the definition of AP is under contract, then they're somewhat in limbo, such as this is right now, from since 2021. So that...
Correct.
We've got to figure out what land this is for and make that designation. That's the first piece of this. The second one is taking the definition, or what's allowable within RAD, right, and adding in the birthing center capacity as a CUP.
Correct. Within ag, the ag zoning district, not rural area development.
Within what?
It's within ag.
Okay.
Correct. These are two independent requests. They can move forward.
Yeah, okay. I just think to make that clear with everybody, the zoning has to, the comprehensive plan amendment has to happen anyway, because right now, it technically isn't qualify for AP.
Correct.
Because it's not under contract, so it needs to be given something. And the second one then is, do we add this language for the possibility for a CUP into the definition of ag? Right, okay. Thank you. Just want to clarify that.
Good clarification? Okay. Again, we'll take the first motion here. If we can get that, we'll move to discussion. No, sorry. At this time, we have to close from public. But this will also, just for everybody's awareness, we'll go to city council. Do we have a date for that one?
May 7.
So regardless of the outcome of this meeting, it still does go base, they'll hear our recommendation. There'll be another opportunity. Is that also a public hearing?
It is not an official public hearing, but people have spoken at city council meetings.
At public comment. Okay, thank you.
And the same, same.
Right.
Yep.
And the two motions are there. Let's start with the top one. Do we have?
Move to recommend approval of the comprehensive plan amendment for the property from agriculture preserve to rural area development with conditions listed in the staff report.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Ray Camp, seconded by Commissioner Stiles to move to recommend approval. Discussion points, gentlemen. Commissioner Ray Camp?
I think I kind of clarified my point before, because there is no contract for this land. Is that a contract with the city or contract with the county?
That is a good question. I believe it was through Met Council approved by the city.
Okay. This contract doesn't exist, so therefore, this land cannot be in agriculture preserve by our definition of what agriculture preserve is. And so are other choices in the list of future land use definitions, rural area development, which is the surrounding area, is where, how it should be zoned to fit within this surrounding...
Correct.
Plats. Thank you. I think that obviously makes sense. That's, we've got a definition that doesn't apply to the land anymore. We've got to find a home for it. This seems to fit.
I agree. And again, it's just important to note that we are just approving the comprehensive plan amendment tonight. There will be future notices for anything else that may come forth. That's for tonight, to move forward where this is, because it is an area in limbo. I am in favor of it.
Additional comments?
Yeah, I would kind of echo that. We're assigning a name to a section of property that needs a name applied. We are not voting on approving a business of any kind to be allowed to operate there tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Reeves, anything?
Yeah, I'm okay with moving the property to rural area development. I guess I'd like some more clarification, that if we don't move it to rural area development, it just stays as agricultural.
Correct.
And then this could come again sometime.
Correct.
I'm going to change my opinion on that. I'd like to just leave it what it is. So therefore, I'm against the proposed, the proposed recommendation.
Understood.
Does a recommendation to council to consider other options?
It'd have to be an alternative motion on this one. The other possibility, depending on how people are leaning towards it, is providing, Commissioner Reeves, providing his facts and findings, if there's anything additional in the dissent on that.
I mean, I would go along with, it's probably going to come up more with the zoning text amendments, but I don't believe that this is the right facility for this property, this area. I fully believe in the mission of the business, but I don't believe this is the right area for a commercial business, in my opinion. So therefore, I don't see any need right now to move it to rural area development and just leave it the way it is. That's my facts and findings.
I tend to agree as well, especially with the feedback that we've gotten.
Yeah. And again, thank you to the community for being here. Your feedback is the most important thing for us. It takes time. It takes commitment. You'll probably be here again, but I personally like hearing from all of you, so thank you for your emails and for being here tonight.
And I agree with Commissioner Reeves in the same sense, but I, do we have a legal obligation to address this because it's not under contract anymore?
I don't believe so.
I don't think we do.
No, it's been in the 2040 comp plan since it was adopted in 2019 or 2020.
Right, but I mean, the agriculture preserve definition says it's under contract.
Correct. If it maintains this ag preserve guidance, that they could enter into a new contract.
Okay.
Additional comments? All right, and the motion, without hearing anything, we'll move to vote then. Motion is to recommend approval of the comprehensive plan amendment for the property from ag, agricultural preserve, excuse me, to rural aerial development with the conditions listed in the staff report. All those in favor of the recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Is that a nay, Commissioner Geffrey? Sorry, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So the motion fails to pass 3-2 with Commissioner Reeves, Commissioner Ray Camp, Commissioner Geffrey in the dissent. Does staff prefer to have recommendations on this one, an additional motion, or do we have?
The findings for denial are all I need outlined.
Okay. Do you want to provide?
Do you like some findings for denial? Findings for denial for me, it doesn't need to move into rural area development. It can just be the way it is right now. I mean, I've said it before. It's agricultural, no matter what its zone. It's been that way for a long time. If, like I said, in my opinion, it doesn't need to be. I don't believe it's the right place for commercial development, so it doesn't need to move into rural area development. It could just remain as it.
Does that suffice? Do we have additional?
It is sufficient.
Sufficient, okay. We'll move to the second motion here. This is on the zoning text amendments.
Move to recommend approval of the zoning text amendments requested by the Minnesota Women's Care is proposed by city staff.
Second up, we have a motion by Commissioner Ray Camp, seconded by Commissioner Geffrey to recommend approval. Discussion. Can we start again?
I think the definitions that were, came up that were looking to interject within the birthing center and the recovery center, I'm sorry, the name of it.
Transition.
What's that?
Transitional.
Transitional care. I think it needs a home, and I don't know if that applies, if those definitions are found in any of our land use definitions or allowed land use in our zones within city code. So it needs a home. I just don't feel that rural area development is the right home for it, where it belongs. So I would be against this zoning change, text amendment. So I would be against this zoning change, text amendment.
Commissioner Geffrey? Anything additional?
Well, it's a lot to take in, I'll be honest. Gears are turning. I kind of question what type of other zoning options we would have to maintain the atmosphere and environment that the birthing center would require. We, I mean, I know I've viewed them in the past, and they're kind of a mixed bag of locations and a lot of innovative ideas and things like that, so I'd like to find them a home, as it were, but not restrict them either. So I guess that's just, that's my comment.
Thank you. Additional comments? I think from my approach, again, separating out the, separating out the specific facility versus the text amendment, the text itself is fine, it fits. We do allow medical facilities, there's callouts for even landing pads for helicopters, which I know is a whole nother bag. We have nursing care, personal care, self-storage, like there's a lot that is allowed in here. Adding this additional use, I see is in, in the spirit of the current zoning text amendments. Again, separating out the specific future request that would come from all approvals in a CUP. The text that the city staff has put together, I think fits, it matches. I do like the limitations that we put in terms of the size, the number of parkings and stuff like that, again, consistent with the overall general text of this zoning. So for that, I would be in favor of the zoning text amendments.
I am too. I think that this does, I think this is a good thing, and so I would be open to having this in our city.
One additional thing I would recommend to you for the applicant, obviously here in and listening online, I think the message has been pretty clear from the local neighbors and stuff like that. One of the things we've seen a lot too with other applications is the more time we spend with our neighbors, the sharing the knowledge, the information as to, you know, vision and stuff like that. I think as a community, and we're seeing that presence here of a strong local community, where we want to make sure that we're, we are good neighbors, we are stewards of the land, we are stewards of the future, anything we can do to be good neighbors regardless of what the application is at hand, you know, so that recommendation of reaching out to the neighbors, we usually see goes quite a long way with a lot of the applications. Do we have any additional comments from Commissioners?
I don't think that birth centers and postpartum care centers are allowable, should be allowable in agricultural districts. That's all I got.
Do we have any additional? All right, again, the motion on the table is to recommend approval of the zoning text amendments requested by Minnesota Women's Care as proposed by city staff. All those in favor of the recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Commissioner Geffrey, sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said aye.
Motion passes 3-2 with Commissioner Vries and Commissioner Ray Camp in the dissent. Commissioner Stile, Reiser, and Geffrey in the approve. So with that, item 4B has concluded. Again, I'm sorry, Sophia, what date is this going to City Council?
May 7th.
So May 7th, this will go to City Council, just for awareness, oops, sorry, please share with your neighbors too, for those that wish to join in there. And then you're welcome to stay, you're welcome to leave as well. I know it's been a long night, so up to you. And thank you again for coming out and seeing government in action. We'll give just a moment here for the room to clear.
Volunteer government.
Huh? Volunteer. All right, we'll have the room clear out here. Apologies, we're just letting the room clear out here.
Why don't we get a deputy for our meeting?
All right, perfect. So with that, we have concluded item 4 for this evening. Item 5, there was no new or unfinished business. We'll move to item 6, which are our communication and updates. Back to Sophia.
Mr. Chair, on March 6th, City Council approved the Planning Commission 2024 Work Plan. They also approved the Stillwater Schools Comprehensive Plan Amendment and rezoning, and the CEF Solar Farm Conditional Use Permit Extension. And then we have the 2024 Planning Commission Handbook that should be coming to your emails here shortly, since that work plan has been approved. And then upcoming meetings, March 25th and April 8th, and we do have items on both of those agendas so far.
Perfect. And again, noticing it's spring break time, if anybody's not going to be there, if you could email Sophia, just so we have...
I will not be there March 25th.
Yeah, I won't either.
I marked, both of you March 25th?
Correct.
I'll be there, Sophia.
Okay. I'll follow up if we don't have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. And you said March, both the 25th and April 8th have items already?
Correct.
Just move everything to the 25th.
All right, perfect. With that, we have hit the end of our agenda for this evening. Again, thanks for all of the residents that came out for this evening, city staff for your work in preparing this, and Commissioners for spending your evening here together. We will go ahead and conclude the meeting at 8:36 PM. Thank you and good night.